The approval of the special event permit for the Pride Parade to be held on Saturday, June 1st, 2024 from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., with a rain date of Saturday, June 8th, 2024 from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., contingent upon route and police detail approval. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Bush.
Second.
Second by Dr. Kreller. And Ms. McGuire is not here to introduce this. Is she going back or not?
Yes.
Well, we could, is anyone here from that organization that would like to come up? You can go ahead and come on up and tell us about your application and...
Hi, hey all, thanks for having us. Jeremy Thompson.
I'm Mel Manuel.
We run an organization, a nonprofit here in St. Tammany called Queer North Shore, and we've been working towards basically creating LGBTQ visibility in St. Tammany and surrounding parishes for the last several years. We have 1,900 members, the majority of which are based here in St. Tammany, and around 650 are based here in Mandeville. And about six months ago, we started building out plans for a Pride Parade, and specifically a family-friendly Pride Parade, and I really want to emphasize that. This is an alternative to what happens in New Orleans, and I have no hate for what happens there. We've been a part of that in the past, but we are conscious of our surroundings and where we are. And this parade would include a number of the churches that are supportive of our community, as well as Democratic groups. I'm also, actually, we're both member elects for the Democratic State Central Committee and the local DPEC here. And it's very much an all-inclusive focused parade that would be very family-friendly, very short as well, as I'm sure you've seen on the route. It's the same route, I believe, as the dog parade that you have here. I'm here mainly to speak to the logistical aspects of it, and then, now, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I'll speak after you.
Okay, that's all I had to say specifically about it.
Okay, can I also have three minutes? Because I think...
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you guys starting it over?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay.
We'll keep it going.
All right, great. I'm Mel Manuel. I'm from St. Tammany, grew up in the Mandeville Public School System until high school. I went to Covington High and graduated valedictorian in 2002. This morning, when I was planning coming here tonight, I was planning on shaving. I have facial hair. I'm transgender. I was concerned that my transness might prevent us from getting the permit. And in reality, I don't know if you guys would have noticed or even cared that I'm trans, but that's the kind of self-policing that I do, kind of on a daily basis, and I think a lot of our LGBTQ community does the same thing. Living here in St. Tammany, we think things like, if I hold my wife's hand in public, am I going to get weird looks? Or if I fly this flag in my yard, is my property going to be vandalized? Should I look less gay for my kids? Ban a recital? These are the kind of thoughts that occur to us on a daily basis. Living in St. Tammany as an LGBTQ person means that you live with a certain amount of fear every day. Last year, we had a trans teenager, their ban hate billboard was torched in the middle of the night. We had our Pride displays removed from our public libraries. There were hundreds of books with LGBTQ characters and authors challenged, and over 500 anti-LGBTQ bills proposed nationwide last year. This year, it's about the same. So that's why we celebrate Pride. We've been politicized, ostracized, marginalized, demonized, but we're still here, and we're really, we're thriving. There's more than one of our members of Queer North Shore that's been beaten so badly that they were left to die. But, you know, for whatever reason, they're queer, they're trans, they wear the wrong clothes, something like that. That's why we celebrate Pride. Queer North Shore has 1,900 members. About 600 are Christian. Some are gay, some are not. We are all ages, all political affiliations. The one thing that unites us is that we want, we want to be free to be ourselves publicly in the community where we live. So if you do grant us this permit, it doesn't mean that you agree with homosexuality. It means that you recognize our humanity, that we do belong here in St. Tammany Parish, and that we do have a constitutional right to peaceful assembly. So I thank you guys for your time and consideration, and I want to extend an invitation to each and every one of you to join us on June 1st in our celebration. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, please, let's, we're going to have a, we have a long evening ahead still, so let's move forward with some council discussion on this. Questions or comments or thoughts from council?
I had a question for...
One of y'all might want to stay up here in case we have...
Yeah, just, I know that you had said that the parade would be short, and I noticed on your website, you guys kind of advertise it as being from, although you didn't know where, where the parade was going to be, on your website, it was saying like from 5:00 until 6:00, but on your application, it's from 4:00 until 7:00. So I was wondering if you all would be willing to short, because I don't think it's going to take you three hours, and the concern, the concerns I've gotten is the fact that the streets would be closed for three hours. So, and I don't think it's going to take you that long. It should take you just about, you know, an hour. We could even maybe do a little bit long, you know, like hour, 15 minutes, hour and a half, just to make sure, but just to move it. That's one of our criteria that we look at in voting on this, is just to make sure that one of them is, where is it? That, I believe it's number eight. This is under City Ordinance Section 11-136.10. If the event is a parade, the parade route meets with its approval, and the parade is scheduled to move along its route from its point of origin to its point of termination expeditiously and without unreasonable delay. So I just think if we shortened, if you would be willing to shorten the time...
It's actually already very much aligned with what you're thinking. We've done a mock walk of the route just to kind of get a sense for it. It would be impressive if we lasted an hour on that route. The reality was, it was more about, we're going to be talking to some of the local businesses, just about having people there, not hosting a private event or anything like that, but congregating at like the Barley Oak and some of these other locations. So it's more about just letting people know, this is the timeframe, but we also didn't know, because in full transparency, we have had to vet different viable locations for this, not knowing where it could happen necessarily.
I was thinking like lineup time to like, when we'd be totally...
Probably the whole thing, right.
Yeah, the whole thing.
That's what I had a feeling that was, but I know that that has just been a concern that's come up, just people, just, just, nobody really, I think one of the goals, just kind of city-wise, when, you know, when you shut down the streets, people want them shut down for as small amount of time as necessary for you to, you know, do your parade, but not draw it out.
We're happy to modify it to be more specific with the language around specifically the time that we would be in any way impeding traffic.
We definitely don't need three hours.
So would you, would you want to do your, I think the times that you gave was four to seven. Would you prefer to do four to five, five to six?
I think probably five to six, based on what we've talked about.
Because that's what's advertised on your website, so that way you wouldn't have to change it.
Changing the website's not a big deal either way, but five to six, I think, would be fine in specificity for a single hour.
The other question I have is on, back to the Code of Ordinances, 11-136.1, under number two, it, it's, well, first of all, it says, "After review of a permit application, the mayor or council shall grant the permit if." So under number two, it says, "The event will not require the diversion of so great a number of police officers to properly police the event and the areas contiguous thereto, so as to deprive the remainder of the municipality of normal police protection." So on your application, it has that you think only about 150 are going to be in attendance. So I just wanted to class, clarify, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to clarify, because this says estimated attendance, 150 people. I think it's going to be a lot more than that. It seems like you guys are a group of 1,900, so I didn't, I don't know, how many people do you think are going to actually march with you all? And then, on top of that, how much, I know you can't, you can guess, if your, if your audience, right now, it says that this is going to be North Shore's first Pride Parade. On June 1st, "Family-friendly parade will roll in St. Tammany, featuring Queer North Shore members and local groups, including Connect North Shore." So there's a few, there's like about five groups, and then on your, on your website, you're asking, you're offering like other groups can join. And then if you guys are marching, you know, are you expecting 1,900 of your members to march, or is there a cap? I'm just, what I'm concerned about is, when this was done, was, was the Special Events Committee, were, and they're here, when you all factored in how many police officers we needed, were you basing that on 150 people, or were you basing it on being a city parade, or were you basing it being on the first North Shore? Like, it says North Shore Parade, not just St. Tammany Parish, but this, this will introduce Pride North Shore, a celebration of local LGBT community and our allies in St. Tammany, Tangipahoe, and Washington Parishes. So it's Tri Parish. I have a feeling we're going to get a lot of people out here. It's already been advertised for at least two weeks that I know of. It doesn't say the lakefront, but now that they, once the location is determined, and it's only April, I think that this, I think you guys are going to be very successful. I think you're going to have a great turnout, which is what you want. I just want to make sure, for your safety, for ours, for the public safety, that we are, we have adequate manpower. So I'm asking, was that factored in when, when we determined how many police, because right now, we only have eight police officers? I'm just questioning, is that enough?
I believe it's enough. That would be one police officer at each intersection to handle it, unless we had 3, 4, 5,000 people, which I'm not really expecting, then, then we would need more. But I think up to, say, 1,000 people, that the eight police officers should be able to handle that. It's mostly traffic enforcement and for the safety of the marchers.
If I could also speak just to some of the points you made, I mean, the way you framed it, it sounds beautiful in my mind, as far as being that successful, and I would love to see it get there eventually. A lot of those, for instance, the groups that we name in there, those are also, many of those people are also part of our group. So they're already couched within that, but they have their own identities as well, and so we're acknowledging them as being part of the crew, much like in some of the other parades you see during Mardi Gras. And then also beyond that, even though we're saying this is Tri Parish, that's more about being inclusive, and the reality is, we have maybe a dozen members in Washington Parish. And so just to kind of paint a slightly more clear picture of the reality of, you know, we're not pulling in a massive number of folks from different directions, and we have had a number of events that we've advertised to the same groups of people in a variety of ways.
Parade.
Yeah, parade. So we participated in Pushmo, for instance, in Abita Springs, and so we had a pretty good idea, like our turnout for the people who participated in that, that one, I think we ended up...
65.
Yeah, 65. And I think that we will push to, you know, 100 plus.
65, in the parade.
But even attending, and it's hard to say, of course, because the route is very mixed along, and it's residential as you're going through, but I would say that, you know, just the people, because we created an event, an RSVP event, and encouraged people to go, and even based on that, I'd say, you know, maybe there were 50 people there specifically from our group, even though there are people we recognize in the community otherwise, that came out for that beyond that. So you're still looking at less than 100 for that particular event. Now, I would love to see it go beyond that, but just knowing what we've seen so far, I'm not estimating for that when I'm thinking about things like handouts, or, you know, other aspects of participation that would require knowing a specific number. I'm definitely not estimating as high as you all are, just to give you a sense of that, but we are working towards that. So we are clear about that. It's just we aren't expecting quite that turnout just yet in our first year.
And on the application, it says, "Will you require barricades for the event?" It says, "No." I just say, again, public safety, is it better to have barricades? Is it better not to have barricades, just from a public safety, to protect those marching, but also to protect, you know, just, what's better?
The fact that we'll have a police officer at every intersection with their lights and marked unit, we would not need barricades at those intersections, because we're going to have an officer there with, with a car blocking, physically blocking all those intersections.
Okay. Our, one application, oh, you're Crew V.
Oh, I was wrong.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, we're good.
I had the wrong...
Okay.
Let me ask just...
That's why I was...
Is there a second page? Because I don't, I don't see a second page with the indemnity. I don't have that.
Oh, for the insurance?
There's not, it stops at 13.
We didn't acquire insurance yet, because we didn't know if we would get approval.
Right, and you have 30, they, as long as, yeah, we just make a contingency that you have to have it 30 days.
Well, that's, that was my question, is because the one that we just did had, it starts at 14, and then it has the rest of it. Is there, am I missing a page?
No.
I think it's from...
13. It's this, it's the same page.
Mine doesn't, like, it just has this page.
There's a second page on here. Mine ends at 13, and then the second page after... Oh, here we go, the dude asks about this at COI, and then it asks about police department.
No.
What she's saying is, it doesn't have this page in the package.
Yeah, we don't have that.
I checked the website, I went on the website.
Can I see that? I haven't seen that.
That's that page out of Crew.
That's the other one.
That's the, that's the second half of the application.
Yeah, we didn't get this part.
It must have been lost in copies, because we didn't have it.
Yeah, it was completed. Will there be security? Okay. Are you planning on having like floats, or is it strictly walking?
Well, we do plan on having, we plan on having vehicles, but not floats, so it's mainly for the sake of those that are older in the group, and it would just be a basic flatbed trailer with seating, and it wouldn't be a high-rise or built out, or have any, any problems with, say, turns or traffic or anything like that. It'd be a conventional size and fit in a single lane.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Well, on number seven, it says, so this, again, Code of Ordinances, 11-136.10. "The event is not being held for this," I just have a question about this. "The event is not being held for the sole purpose of advertising any commercial product, service, cause, or goods, and the event is not designed for private profit." So, couple of questions there, because it is a cause, but does it, so that's number one. Number two...
Councilwoman McGuire, you're misreading that one.
Okay.
So it's a, so the conduct of the event is, I'm sorry, the event is not being held for the sole purpose of advertising any commercial product. The commercial is the modifier for it, so it's a commercial cause.
Commercial cause.
Yes.
Okay, that was my, that was my question, okay. And then, on the website, where is it? Okay, it looks like y'all are not necessarily charging for tickets, but there's like a donation to, if they want, if, if you want to participate in the parade, it says, "Get your tickets to march in the Pride, in the Pride North Shore Parade." So it's a donation, and it's kind of any amount. My question to Aaliyah, don't mean to throw you, just, I just thought about this, but the lakefront people, is it, is it, is that allowed? Is it okay for them to have a donation to participate in the march, or is that considered a fundraiser? And with public property, we can't really have a fundraiser on public property.
But it's, that would be more like a registration.
So it's like a registration fee, just like you would for Crew to Pooch, or...
Whatever, the donate, however you decide.
Okay.
The donation would be a registration fee to walk.
Yeah, it's basically because we've never charged a membership fee for our group, and so it's a way of basically covering the cost in lieu of having not charged a membership fee in the past.
Which is really how Crew to Pooch and other organizations do it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, because it also says, "The price to participate is pay what you can. 100% of the proceeds will go towards Pride programming for the month of June, including police details, EMS, decorations, permits, cleanup crews." So that's all for the parade. That, that I understand, but then it says, "It's also going to go towards the, to help towards the advertisement of a large billboard in Covington on Highway 90, Highway 190, featuring a happy Pride message, and all costs associated with the Ponchatula Pride Party at Twin Steeple's." So I'm fine if it, I think it falls, if it's going just to cover the costs of putting on the parade, I think that's allowed, but if money being raised is going to...
That's...
It's not? Okay, okay, okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments from council before we go to public comment? All right, we may get you all back up here if there's other questions, but thank you. All right, public comment. Gentleman in the back had his hand up first.
Hello, my name is Adam. Some other people may know me as Pontotrain Audit. I am formerly a resident of the greater Mandeville area. I've moved away, but I'm still here on the North Shore. I regard myself as an ally. I am not LGBTQ, but I fully support them. I believe that it is imperative that we have all these different parades, and yet, we have never once had a Pride Parade here on the North Shore. I speak, I don't know if there's anybody else here from Southeastern. I'm a student at Southeastern Louisiana University. There is a Discord server on there for LGBTQ members that is 300 strong. I don't know how many of them are part of Queer North Shore. I do know that they were concerned that anti-LGBT members were going to show up here and debate against this. I urge you to ignore anybody who is obviously just trying to be anti-LGBT. I want you to consider only the facts. I think it's important that they are represented. We even have a parade held annually for dogs. Why do we not have support for the other human members of our community? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Pratt.
Claudine Parret, 171 Live Oak Street, Mandeville. I too am not LGBT, but I grew up in a family with siblings that are, and growing up in the 60s and 70s was a very different time. I watched my siblings struggle. I still watch them struggle today, and I'm for it. I just don't understand, I want them too, to be protected, and I think that some of the things that Jill said is, why can't you all compare the, their parade to maybe some of the homecoming parades, or the dog parade, or any type of other parade that has gone down the lakefront, and assume your police coverage by that? Because what if eight, eight police officers isn't enough? What if you do have hate people that might be at Block 9 when Block 8 has the last police officer there? What is that one police officer going to do when you have these hateful people over here that bombard these people trying to do something that they're entitled to? So my idea is that maybe whoever plans these parades on the lakefront, such as every school has marched up and down the lakefront for their homecoming parades, we have the dog parade, maybe take that into consideration and think that there are people that don't want this here. Times have changed, people. We, we've got to get with the program. This is the real world, and everybody needs to accept everybody for who they are and be prepared for what might happen. We don't want it to happen, but what if it does? You need to be prepared for the people that don't want it here. That's all I have to say.
All right, I'll get to you in a second, Cal. Any, next, go ahead, come on up. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
My name's Meg Jerosic. I live in Seidel right now. I worked at the Boys and Girls Club. I ran it in Seidel for 10 years, and this group I have joined, North Shore, Queer North Shore, is so necessary, and it needs to be visible. I walked with them through the Pushmo Parade in Abita Springs, and I couldn't actually walk in their group, because the Abita Springs Beautification Committee asked us to help pick up the trash. But anyhow, we got to, we were at the back picking up trash. The amount of people that came up to us and thanked us for being visible, people whose children were there, working with kids for 10 years at the club, not a single family is not affected by this. You may not know that you have a family member in your family that is different, but there's a wide variety of different people, and they just need to know that they're loved and accepted, and we do need to be seen. And there are people that are hateful, but we can overcome this. We absolutely can, and we should. Everybody, any scouts, anybody who wants to have a parade, it seems can. We are, should be visible, and we love you all and would love to be loved back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, in the back, come on up.
Hello, my name is David Shapiro, 617 Chateau Andelot. I think many of you here know me. We, I'm the board president of North Shore Robotics, citizen of Mandeville. Thank you again for the proclamation and for North Shore Robotics Day. If it didn't rain, it would have been an awesome, awesome day there. Clay, thank you again for coming. I want to speak about this parade particularly, for two reasons. One is, I'm not LGBTQ either. However, I do support the community. I believe that they're a wonderful community. I do not believe the majority of Mandeville wants, does not want this. I don't believe we need extra police or any extra security. I think the community widely would agree with this parade. I also worry that if we start stopping, having a restriction on parades, we're going to have restrictions on possibly a North Shore Robotics Parade, on other parades in the community, because of a theory of maybe some people don't want it, or we have too many parades, or because of the commitments that would be involved and things like that. So I just want to say that I really do feel very strongly that this parade is needed in the community, and that as a nonprofit leader, I worry about other nonprofits being restricted for any reasons that are, you know, discriminatory or not. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Any other public comment? In the back, and then I'll come over here on the right.
Hi, my name is Katie Koontz. I moved to the North Shore in 2020 and found the Queer North Shore community, and they have been amazing to me. And I know that recently, there have been things said online with concerns that this wouldn't be a family-friendly event, and so I wanted to speak to that a little bit, to tell you briefly about what it has meant to, to my family. So I am, I am queer, and I'm a parent of a queer child, and I know how important it is to see that support from other people and know that there are people that are like you, and to be welcomed into a community, because so many people have been completely exiled by their families. And I just wanted to cite just a few other brief things about the Queer North Shore Group to kind of show you how much of an amazing community organization they are. I lost my husband last year, and they organized a meal train for me, for my family, for two weeks, during the last few weeks of his life, and I can't tell you how much that meant to me. Many people didn't know me. They had never met me in a... never met me in an event before, and yet they still participated in that. So those are the kind of people that are a part of this Queer North Shore Group. Additionally, my daughter is disabled, and I've taken her to several, several events. She's nine years old, and everything has been, everyone has been welcoming, and they have just kind of taken her in. And every event is, takes into consideration the disabled community, whether that's children or adults, older people, doesn't matter what their disabilities are, people that are neurodivergent, that might have sensory issues. There's always these concerns that are taken into consideration so that everyone in everyone's family is just taken care of and respected. And so I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We had somebody over here. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Donna Benoid. I've been living in Covington since 87. I am, I was a business owner. I had a store for 15 years. I don't know how these businesses on this lakefront can afford to have these parades going on in front of their businesses. It is quite a strain on the business. Where are the patrons going to park on a Saturday, which is always a busy night? And I want to know if insurance is required, because it should be inquired. I think that who's going to clean this mess up? Public works? I mean, who's going to pay for that? This should not be a burden to the people in this city. It should be paid by the people who are putting on this parade. I am 100% against this parade. I think parades, there needs to be a moratorium against additional parades going on the lakefront in the interest of the high, the, the business owners. Because let me tell you, to have a business with that overhead is an extreme amount of money, and the tax money that goes to the city is ridiculous to have their business cut, cut off for part of the day. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. In the back, come on up.
Hello, my name is Adolfo Rodriguez, 202 Anthony Avenue. Hello. We went to high school together. Mandeville High, go Skippers, boo St. Paul's. I am, I am a teacher at Mandeville High School. I have been married for 22 years, and I have six kids. We are as normal a family as, as can be. I am not personally LGBTQ, but several of my children are. All I can tell you is that an event like this means the world to them, that we can, that they can celebrate who they are means the world to them, that I can celebrate them for who they are means the world to me and to my wife. It means the world to the gay students that I teach at Mandeville High School. I have 108 seniors that I teach English to, and at least 13% of them identify somewhere on the LGBTQ spectrum. It means the world to them. They are looking forward to this and to their families as well. If it makes, those who are concerned about, about proprietor or proprietorship, I promise you to spend money at the Barley Oak. I know several people who will join me there. We're going to do our part to make sure they are fine, and any restaurants that might be along the way. You have my word on that. So I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity to have this event, for your consideration, and for being so fair-minded to everyone. Thank you so much.
Any other public comment? In the middle. Yes, Dr. Crowler. Or no, Chief? Okay. Come on up, sir.
I normally don't dress like this. My name is Mike Oster, and I'm a resident of Covington. However, I've lived in Mandeville, and at the same time, I have many families that live in Mandeville. And I have many friends that live in Mandeville. I'm not for the pride parade. This is the first event on the North Shore. I can guarantee it's not going to stop here. This is what it's for. That's the agenda. To spread and extend events like this all through St. Tammany Parish, Washington Parish, elsewhere. It's not only Mandeville. They even want to put signs up in Covington and elsewhere, and they'll do it. There are entities, there are forces out there. They do not have mouths, they do not have bodies. They use you folks as their mouthpieces and as their bodies, representatives of federal government, state government, and local government, to speak for them and to proclaim their agendas. I urge you guys, Mandeville has always been outside activities that have supported family values and family welfare, always protected the children, always. This parade, be on the lookout. There's not just going to be people from Mandeville or from St. Tammany Parish. There are going to be a massive of people coming from Orleans Parish, all over the state, because it's the very first one, and they want to make an announcement to it. It will happen. Eight policemen will not do it. I hope there's no problems. I really do. But you guys need to make a very big decision, a very big one. Mandeville has always supported and encouraged family activities where families could come out here with children, could come out here with their elderly parents, and have always expressed the welfare and the moral issues of family values, where people have picnics and have a good time. This is not a family value. Family for who? Mandeville has always been looked up to. You are taking the stand here that other cities in our parish will be looking at you folks to see what they going to do. Mandeville is very respected. It's beautiful. You have taken care of your city. Please do so here. Protect the families that's in Mandeville and the families that come here from all parishes, because you guys hold a very good moral and welfare for your residents and for St. Tammany. Let's keep it that way. You guys got a very-
Thank you. Thank you. Let's try to please everyone, be respectful for whoever's at the microphone. So, yes, ma'am, would you like to come up?
I hate public speaking, so. I actually live in Mandeville, block from the lakefront, not in Covington. And I too have a husband and two kids. I'm an ally. I'm not in the LGBT community, which I think speaks highly, a lot of us speaking up here are not in LGBT community. We just want to see this represented in our community. So for my family values, I will be bringing my kids. I can't wait. Can't wait to bring them out there, help some of my good friends celebrate, and I will be bringing my elderly parents too. So.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Like, I don't, I don't see a lot of, like, mean looks, and I think a lot of us were expecting that this evening, like, not the, the empathy and the, the acceptance that we are seeing. So that's amazing. And I didn't, I wasn't going to speak until I heard the thing about family values. I'm not going to point her out, but my daughter is here to support this cause. She's nine years old. She likes to crawl on the floor with my two-year-old acting like an animal. She doesn't do anything that isn't, she's about as innocent as you can get. And to, to help her feel supported, I think is, is really important. A lot of people don't understand that the idea of LGBTQ is not about who you're attracted to as much as it is about identity. And, and to reject children's identity by not passing this, that's, that's pretty rough. So yeah, I'd really like to see you support the children, because this is a family value. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Ms. Woods, come on up.
Sarah Wood, 210 Shawnee Drive. My question is about the family and friendly aspect. How do we enforce that? Because what I've seen online is not anything, I want parading down the lakefront. So I mean, I respect that they're saying it's going to be family-friendly, but how do y'all, what does that normally, you know, how do you police that? What do you do? Because I'm just, and I know the internet can inflame things, but is it like, with a normal parade, do you have these issues regarding any type of obscenity or depravity or things like that on display? Because when you look on the internet, it doesn't give me a warm and fuzzy feeling. I don't know a lot about the alphabet parade, but I just, you know, I'm asking that question. How do you, how do we know that what we see on the internet? And I think that's a lot of fear, and, you know, unknowns pose fear. I'm not going to be bullied by people because I have concerns. I don't bully anybody else, but I'm not going to be bullied because I have concerns about what is coming to our little town, our little city. I know that in considering this permit, you know, you do have to consider the community standards. What are the standards of our community? You know, what type of value does it provide and things like that? I understand, I understand with these organizations that lawsuits are always, you know, something to consider. And, and, you know, certainly I don't want taxpayer dollars wasted on that. I believe in freedom and stuff like that. But I want to know, as with any other group or any other organization that would want a parade, how do we avoid, or how do we protect, you know, or keep it family, whatever they call it, family-friendly?
I think that we, as a city, my computer died, but our ordinance for parades, I think, does a really good job of, of family-friendly. All the rules that every parade has to adhere by. I know, like, Crew of Eve, you're not allowed to throw in Crew of Eve anything. There you go. Any suggest, any, what you think of-
Sexually explicit, any sexually explicit.
That might get thrown at a parade in New Orleans, that's body parts of male or female, that can't be thrown off of a float for Crew of Eve or anyone. No one can do that.
Costumes that have that sexually explicit things, as will be addressed?
It's, it's listed, and someone else is going to have to help me because my computer died, but it, it does, there are, we do have obscenity laws for any parade.
And that would apply?
Anyone, if anyone at a Crew of Eve parade or any other parade doubt it would happen at the dog parade, because it's a daytime parade. But there's a lot detailed in those ordinance, especially for Crew of Eve, not to, not, Crew of Eve is a nighttime parade. Drinking is involved. It is a citywide parade. I think the ordinances are, are there, and as long as they're enforced.
Yes.
So Section 11-136.7 specifically addresses attire and characterization for all parades and all participants in any type of parade.
Right.
And it specifically says, and I should lead with, that anybody that, we grant a permit application, or we grant an application to and provide a permit to, is bound by that, and they're presumed to know that. And I do believe that the applicants have actually acknowledged the, the requirements.
No, you know, the, yeah, they-
So that 11-136.7 says that all participants in any special event, whether on a float, a truck, horseback, in cars, or other types of vehicles, or on foot, shall be decently attired, and no sexually indecent dress or characterization shall be allowed. Participant of any parade shall be prohibited from conducting themselves in a vulgar or indecent manner, or displaying any behavior that would be shocking or offensive to the general public. Number two, no intoxicated person shall be allowed to participate in a parade. Number three, it shall be unlawful for any person to smoke while on a float, truck, horse, auxiliary vehicle, or any other vehicle which is designated to participate.
I can't, I can't hear the city. Could you start back over on that?
It shall be unlawful for any person to smoke while on a float, truck, horse, auxiliary vehicle, or any other vehicle which is designated to participate in the parade in the assembly area. No participant in any capacity in any parade, except law enforcement personnel, shall possess or have in his, or her custody, any life-threatening object, any firearm, any noxious substance, or any liquid intended to be sprayed, tossed, handed out, or otherwise distributed. So it's very particular, it's very broad, and it applies to all parade participants.
Okay.
And Aleah, if some, if there is a parade, like, this is a brand-new parade. So in, in most cases, when some, when there is an, when there is a new anything, could you kind of talk to us about that? Like, like, if there were, if there was an issue this time around?
That's going to be the next year's event.
And, and they have to apply every eve, like, Crew of Eve, we just saw their application. They apply every year. We've been having the Crew of Eve for well over 20 years. So every single year, so if there was an issue, we can address it.
Yes, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Segura. Came on. And I actually live in Covington. I'm 68 years old, and in case you can't tell, I'm gay. I've been with my partner for 27 years. I'm a casa worker, so that means I've passed a background check. This business of trying to demonize the LGBTQIA community as some lewd bunch of people is just absurd in 2024. We want to celebrate that we are here, that we are a community, that we have families and children. I'm one of three children. I have a gay brother with a PhD, a dean at UCLA. And you know what? He's never been arrested for anything lewd either. I can't believe that I have been since 1973, when I graduated high school on the South Shore, been an out-gay woman with total family acceptance, and I haven't thought about the agenda, because nobody's thought to mail it to me.
Could you hold on? Is something going on over there?
I'm just mumbling to myself.
Okay. What's that? All right. I'd like, if we could, if we could, thanks. I just, it was distracting me, and I'm-
That's cool.
Possibly other stuff.
So anyway, the business about talking about the agenda, I haven't gotten it yet, and I'm on every mailing list. You know what I'm saying? They seem to find me. So if there's an agenda, an LGBTQIA agenda, I'm offended that I haven't seen it yet. The agenda, our purpose, is to show other people, particularly teens and other gay community members, that we are right here. And guess what? Mandeville, Covington, Madisonville, and all the other communities, accept us. They love us. They're our neighbors. So I just had to, I, I can't speak, I can't sit quiet when I hear this, you know, throwing this nastiness on my community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kim Tadaro, and I live on 300 St. Anne here in Mandeville. I had not planned to speak this evening, so I apologize if I seem nervous. I am a member of Queer North Shore, and I am a queer person. I wanted to point out that a lot of the fear that we are hearing is due to not understanding who we are. I'm not scary. I'm 5'3". I weigh 144 pounds. You can take me. Please. I, I won't even put up a fight. The best antidote for fear is knowledge. The best way to deal with this, the best antiseptic is sunlight. Stop forcing us into the dark. Just let us- Just let us come out and be seen. You can't make up boogeymen if you can see what we actually look like. That's all I have to say.
All right. We'll do a couple more and then we do have more on the agenda tonight. So, come on up. We'll try to get one or two more public comment in and then we're going to come back to the council.
Hi, my name is Max. I am nine years old. I live on the North Shore. My grandparents are out, my grandparents and my aunt is out, is are LGBTQ. And my parents taught me to love and not hate, and I think this parade is needed.
Good job.
Mother, I live on the North Shore. We're teaching our kids that this is normal, that it's fun. We can do all the things that other people in New Orleans do and we can do it with class and have a ball. Let's make a good example for our youth.
All right, we're going to do one more. We'll go, we'll do two, three more and then that's it. Like, we, we do need to move on. I'm really trying to get everybody in, but we, we'll be here till midnight.
All right. Kevin Marino, 139 Carmel Drive in Mandeville. I've lived in Mandeville my whole life. I fully support the approval of the permit to allow this parade. I think it's needed. As many of you know, over the last several years, books have been challenged in the library. And as a result, I ended up attending way more library board meetings than I ever intended ever in my life. And the first meeting I went to, I was just curious to find out what was going on. And I heard stories similar to what I heard tonight about people in our community that just want to be themselves and want to be represented. They've told stories about live, growing up in Mandeville and Covington and having to hide who they were, being scared of their teachers or pastors or just their friends or kids in school bullying them for being themselves. That's all they want to be is themselves. Sorry. It, they, they're getting, they get bullied and things just for being who they are. As, as you've heard, Queer North Shore was founded to project those people's voices and to let them know that they have been seen. And they want to help people who are hiding, who are fearful of showing their true selves, to realize that there's others in the parish that are just like them and that this parish accepts them. I think it's been very important to allow this event. And I've heard tonight and I've heard during the library meetings, a phrase, protect the children. And it's, 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 let's talk about protecting children. The highest cause, the second highest cause of death for children 10 to 14 is suicide. The third highest cause of death for people 15 to 25 is suicide. According to the CDC, 26% of LGBT students reported attempting suicide in the last 12 months versus 5% for heterosexual students. That's five times more. The Trevor Project does a survey every year. I suggest you look it, look it up. It's very interesting. In their last survey, they found that communities that had, that were considered that the survey responders said were very unaccepting, had suicide rates that were two and a half times higher than communities that were very accepting. So, if we want to protect the children in this community, we need to be a very accepting community. We don't need to listen to this thinly veiled. It's going to hurt the businesses because the businesses are going to love it. They're going to get lots of money. We need to protect the children by letting them be themselves. And we need to protect the adults in this community who have been hiding in the shadows to come and show themselves. Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to two more. I said we do three more. So, we, we did one. Come on up.
Hi, how you doing? Becky Bone, Mandeville. Over 30 years, I think now. I'm an ally. I have a family. I raised my family here. I find there's nothing, you know, offensive about having this parade. I actually, for another cause, joined their group. I am a member of Queer North Shore. They're some of the nicest, kindest people I think I've ever met. When we went and we all walked in Pushmo and I walked with them and they're like, if you can't pay any fees, that's fine. There were a couple of people that were disabled. They made sure they had accommodations and it was the most wonderful experience. No one did anything raunchy. Everyone's behavior was acceptable for the family values. I think some people need to realize that families have changed. It is 2024, you know, and people need to be accepting of everyone and not so mean-spirited. I mean, times have changed. If they don't approve of the parade, my advice would be to do something else on June 1st. There's a lot of other things they can do in Mandeville than to go to the lakefront. And as far as the businesses, I walked in Marty Paws. I know he got moved to Covington for I don't know how many years. It's over 10. And I know at every time when I would walk back to my car, those businesses were overflowing. But I think the businesses would welcome this on June 1st when it's getting a little hot and wanting to be inside to have more revenue. Thank you and I hope you all approve the parade permit.
All right. Ms. Sullivan? Is there anybody that's, was, is there anybody that signed their name on the list when they came in that didn't get to speak? Or we'll, we'll, we'll do one last one if you're on the list. Okay. All right, go ahead.
Kelly Sullivan, 412 Wilkinson Street. Just want to say I've heard a lot of stories and want to commend the people that came up and talked. It was really good. Takes a lot of courage to come up and say some of these stories I've heard. I'm all for it. Think that maybe we should look at the security of it because just hearing everybody talk, it might, and I'm not going to say might, I believe it's going to get a little bit bigger than what may be initially proposed. And I know you guys do a great job, but I just don't think eight is enough. So, that's the only comment I would like to make. Just take a big picture. Rick, you know I do emergencies and I've been around big crowds and they can get real big, real quick in good, good ways. So, I think that should be the main concern. Thank you.
Okay. Come on up.
My name was on the list.
Yes, I see you there.
They keep talking about this parade. In Abida. My daughter lives in Abida. They were appalled. They couldn't.
Can we do name first?
Johanna Minor.
Thank you.
My daughter lives in Abida. Everybody was outraged that they were able to come into that parade. How they got in there is beyond me. Probably people that are part of the government in Abida Springs. Anyway, this isn't right. What's next? A pedophile parade? A Satanistic parade? What's next?
That needs to be stopped.
That's, but, let's, it's, it's everybody stay respectful. Everybody's had a chance to talk. Not everybody's going to agree with whatever everybody else says at the podium tonight. So, let's just please be respectful and, and let, let her finish.
Our children here in St. Tammany Parish, the entire parish, I have nothing against anybody LGBTQIA plus, lesbians, gay men. I have nothing against them, but leave our children alone. Our children do not need to see a parade of gay people up and down the lakefront for three hours. And any parent that would allow their child to go is not doing the right parenting in my eyes. And y'all have a big decision to make here. And you're just going to say, oh, it's okay. My kids are grown, so they don't have to see it. Well, my kids are grown too, but I have grandchildren and I have other children in the community that I take care of every Sunday. And I just cannot believe that y'all would allow this in our community. Like I said, what's next? A pedophile parade? A Satan parade? That's what we're looking at. If you don't do the right thing and vote no on this, this is not acceptable. And I don't care what they said, they are not the majority in this community. I, I've been to many meetings with many of these same people that spoke tonight. They don't even live here. They live in other places. So, I'm just saying, protect the children. And that is important to protect the children. And I know you all know that because I know you all have children, even if they're not at home still. You have grown children. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to wrap up public comment tonight.
Can I indulge the chair because of my counsel-like position?
He has been, there's been, he in the back.
All right, come up to the microphone if you would.
Kevin Vogeltan, 160 Sunny Lou Place. Just by way of background, what I do for a living, I'm a plaintiff employment discrimination lawyer. There's only three in the entire state of Louisiana that are board certified. I'm one of them. My career is to represent and vindicate the rights of employees who are women, people of color, LGBT, disabled, elderly. That's what I do for a living. I speak truth to power for a living, for people that need it. I will take a lot of pressure off of the council by simply telling you what you already know, telling all the people in the audience, which they may or may not know. It is a foregone conclusion that you will approve this permit. You must approve of the permit under the First Amendment. Once the city of Mandeville allows anyone to parade on the lakefront, we are bound to let everyone to parade on the lakefront. By, by the way, I do find it a little unusual that we have such a permissive statute that essentially allows anyone with $1,000 in their pocket to shut down the lakefront. But that is the law and people do it. And so, we, we are bound as good Americans, constitutional Americans, First Amendment Americans, to allow anyone who abides by the rules to parade. However, let me say that sometimes I think it's helpful to simply be honest. And I think that the honest concern among some people is that if you, for instance, go to the Queer North Shore website, you can see video footage of two different parades. You see their video footage in Pushmo, sounded like a great time, looked like a great time. And you see footage where they participated in the New Orleans Pride Parade. And this has nothing to do with a person's sexual preference or identity, but I can honestly tell you that if the Mandy Milkshakers, God bless them, dressed and acted like people parading in the Pride or Southern Decadence New Orleans parades, which is, you know, appropriate for the time and place, no one in Mandeville would have support the Mandy Milkshakers. If the St. Paul's Marching Wolves, who are beloved, acted and dressed as, as people do at Southern Decadence in New Orleans, they would not be approved of in Mandeville. I think that what we want is to see a great parade. The applicants are legally entitled to parade. Someone said that they're going to be classy and it's going to be great. And so, long as that happens, I know that they'll be welcomed by the good people of the city of Mandeville. But in our community, we do not support the overt, you know, display of sexualization for sexualization purposes. And that, again, that would be anybody, that you could be the, anybody. But to be overly suggestive in our community is frowned upon. So, with all that, I would encourage you to approve the permit and I look forward to a nice parade.
All right. All right. There's no objection. I'm going to close public comments so we can move forward with. Yeah, you're good. You need 30 seconds, chief?
From a housekeeping standpoint, I mean, if, if we need additional police, I think that the applicant has to agree as far as the payment of that, correct? Yeah. So, can we address that?
I am speaking. Can I just look?
No.
You gotta get in the mic.
I need you in the mic because we're broadcasting.
Am I good? Strictly from a public safety, anyone, I've, I've heard some people say that they knew or were victims of violence. I empathize with you. I can tell you this, Captain Meazda, I said, I think he articulated it pretty well. When we're talking about the number of officers, their primary goal is not crowd control. It's, it's labor-intensive to block intersections. Their main, our main goal in that is some, some paraters don't get hit by cars. Let me address the issue. I have the utmost confidence in the people in the city of Mandeville. I don't anticipate a homegrown hate group. I don't. Can I promise that some group isn't going to spontaneously pop up from out of the area? I can't. But what I can assure you is that we reach out to our state and federal partners, I do, on a daily basis. And oftentimes when hate groups come, we do have a heads up. We have gotten no indication, but I understand we're a ways out yet. We don't, we don't take that lightly. So, we have eight officers for basically blocking intersections. That's not our whole department. We also have a shift out there and it'll be in June, correct? So, we'll have extra officers on shift anyway. I have the utmost confidence in our department to handle any type. We're not going to permit any violence. Can I, can I prevent harsh words? No. Do I agree with harsh words? Absolutely not. But I, I'm fully confident that we can handle any type of hate group demonstration that's going to physically impact anyone. And if it gets too big for us, we have a very, very good working relationship with the sheriff's department. They're a phone call away and they'd be here like that, like that. So, I, I can never guarantee no one's going to act viol, I can't do it. If I, if anyone got up here and guaranteed that, they're lying to you. I have a lot of confidence in the people in Mandeville. I'm not from here, so I, I can say this with, speaking very neutral. I haven't seen in this community, this community, I haven't seen it at all. I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but I haven't seen organized violence at all in this community and I hope we can keep it that way. Captain, did you have anything to add?
If the organization feels that eight police officers is not enough and you feel unsafe, you would like more, we can provide as many as you want at our detail room.
I, I would say to kind of invert that, if there are serious concerns and people are worried about it, we definitely will work to help address those things, whether that's bringing in our, back the security staff amongst our group, not, not in any way interacting with, with law enforcement, but just to keep our people basically from getting on the sidewalk or engaging with anybody that might be saying something to them. We've had similar conversations with people that parade with us. But all that to say, if there were concerns and you would like to see more police presence, we want to comply with, with what's going to make the community comfortable. We want to.
And like I said, I'm, I'm confident that we're, we're, we're more than fully capable of handling any physical type threat. Are we going to be removing everyone that says something that doesn't, maybe don't like or hurts your feelings? No. I can't control that and we're not in the business of doing that. But as far as physical safety, I, I can never guarantee, I can't guarantee that you walk out tonight, something bad's not going to happen. But I, I, I personally don't have a, I'm not worried about that. And once again, we, we do monitor that. We have a very good relationship with our federal partners and they do monitor it and we usually get a heads up.
All right.
Yeah. So.
Thank you for that 30 seconds.
Yes, and I, I know she's in the, in the, in the lobby right there, but Claudine, you, you kind of mentioned on, you, you, thank you for that because I guess when you, when you approve something, you just want to make sure it's the what, the what-if and you have to, you have to think worst-case scenario, sadly. It is an election year. We all remember 2020 was quite tumultuous. Lots of things were going on all over the country. So, we just want to make sure that we're prepared to handle it. So, if the chief feels that we can handle it and, and that, you know, we've got enough notice to where if we can reach out to the sheriff or other, other, where you guys could have help and you feel that you can keep everyone safe, that was, that, public safety was my ma, my main concern. And just how big the crowds could possibly be because we don't know yet, right? We don't know what, what, you know? You guys are awesome with market, with marketing. I mean, I think you're doing a great job advertising this. I think it's already gotten some, you know, so it's just like, okay, what if this thing's like crazy successful and we have 30,000 people, you know, on the lakefront? So, it's just one of those things of if, if the police chief feels that we can handle it, then that was, that was my major concern.
All right. We do have a lengthy agenda still beyond this, so I'd like to move on.
Sorry, couple more things.
Sure.
Okay. I would like to limit that, I would, do I need to change the amended or anything? Just where we, we amend the time from five to six instead of from four to seven?
My only question on that is if they're going to march at five, do we need to set up, shut down earlier, 4:30? I, I don't.
We will get police out there. But line, we'll get police out there an hour early. Okay, and then we'll stay as, as long as needed. We have a four-hour minimum.
All right, yeah, because I think their actual march in parade is short, but.
It should take more than an hour for them to complete that, that route.
I think there might have just been some confusion. I think you put four to seven because you were thinking of lineup. You were thinking of everything. And I think the public's, well, some people were thinking that your parade was going to be three hours for a half a mile parade. So, that's, that's where I think there's. for a half a mile parade. So that's, that's where I think there's some concern. But I don't know if we need to change that or just leave it as is. And the other thing, just wanted to remind everybody, no food or drink on the lakefront. So after the parade, so it's just a parade only. And there was, there was not a waiver requested to have food and drink on the lakefront. So once the parade's over, there's like, it's going to be dispersed or like if they, if you hang out on the lakefront, you can hang out on the lakefront, you just can't eat or drink. I just wanted to remind you all of that. That's all. That if you are going to have an after-party that involves food and alcohol, you would just have to have it somewhere other than the lakefront.
Go spend money.
Yeah, like you said, you know?
More than a year.
Any other comments, questions from council?
I'm not going to belabor the point, but just a couple of quick things. This isn't a difficult decision at all. Aleah, in the Special Events Committee, they did their job. The applicant did their job. They know what they're supposed to do to do the parade that they want to do, and the city has communicated that with them so they can hold a very successful parade. I hope you have incredible weather. I hope you have a lot more than 150 people show up, and I hope it is the kickoff to an incredible annual event. Yo, Mandeville's not only family-friendly, but they care, they're welcoming, and they're inclusive. So come on and spend your money and do what you want to do.
All right. Anything else from council? Can we move forward with a vote? Let's move forward with a vote. The approval of the special event permit for the Pride Parade. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's approved.